I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of November 3rd, 2015. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. Our first item this evening is a presentation of Going the Extra Mile Award by City Manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Members of the City Council, tonight is the 28th and 29th GEM Awards that we're going to be bestowing on city employees. For the viewing public, the GEM Award stands for the Going the Extra Mile Award. The criteria is exhibiting efficient leadership on specific assignments, going above and beyond the call of duty, showing special initiative, and having cost containment efforts in their day-to-day assignments. Tonight, we're giving two awards out. One is for Corporal Bob Prescott, and the other one is for Landfill Heavy Equipment Lead Operator Lance Lotus of the Utilities Department. And at this time, I'd like to call up Officer Prescott over to the microphone over there. Chief Martin will be giving him the GEM Award. I'd like to read a few excerpts from the submission for Corporal Prescott on the GEM Award. Starts off that "In January of 2014, Corporal Bob Prescott was reassigned, the department's representative and liaison through the construction process of its new 72,000-square-foot facility at 1111 West Beteravia Road. He quickly learned a great deal about construction work, showed professionalism and tact during the large project, working with contractors, vendors, and other city departments, and juggling competing priorities, timelines, and challenges. He provided the architects the valuable direction and insight from his law enforcement point of view, with careful attention to detail, ensuring that the department's best interests were served during the actual construction of that new facility. The facility opened back in June, and it features countless of improvements and upgrades that were a direct result of his involvement, and that he made on the job during key times during its construction." So Bob, thank you for all your work, and I know the men and women of the Santa Maria Police Department, they have a special thanks for you as well, too, because they live in that facility day in and day out. So. When I first got here this evening, I didn't recognize Bob, because it's the first time I've seen him in his uniform in a year and a half. Usually, a utility belt, hammer, tape measure, plans underneath his arm, and when I first asked Bob to do this, something like almost a year and a half ago, he said, "Sir, I'll do anything you want me to. I'll go there." And I said, "Well, I need somebody with a keen police sense that can view things and know they won't have to be changed later on." And I think at last count, there were a couple hundred of them. So Bob, we are, as Mr. Hayden stated so eloquently, we can't thank you enough for all the changes that you made, because now we don't have to make those. So congratulations, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, Mr. Hayden, Chief. I want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure and an experience, to say the least. A pleasure, to say the least. I couldn't have done this without some inside help, and I would like to also, on behalf of the GEM Award and receiving that, I would like to thank those that helped me. And that would be Jeff Stoner from IBI, who was very instrumental in guiding me through what plans were. Also Eddie Williams, who's a contract employee, basically took my hand and walked me around the building until I figured out what it was I was supposed to do. And also Roger Oles from the Engineering Department. All three of them made it very interesting, worthwhile, and it allowed me to do my job better. So thank you to them, and thank you for the award. Thank you very much.
Can I say something? Bob, let me ask you, has it been hard to not wear a helmet every day?
I miss my helmet. Yes, sir.
Actually, Bob was our motor officer, so he went from one helmet to a construction helmet, so it's pretty fitting. The next GEM recipient tonight is Landfill Heavy Equipment Lead Operator Lance Lotus. If I can have Lance come up to the podium, and with our Utilities Director, Mr. Springer. Lance exceeded expectations by carrying out two very high-profile projects at the Santa Maria landfill while managing his existing duties. The first project was the installation of a new landfill gas line at the landfill to supply methane gas to Marion Regional Medical Center's Cogen engines. He used GPS technology to identify the optimal path for the new lines, procured parts, and built components to ensure that the vacuum on the system improved the overall gas quality to the Cogen engines over at Marion Medical Center. His innovative and hands-on approach avoided significant outsourcing costs and helped keep the landfill in compliance with our regulators. Equally important, this project provided an interruptible power source to our medical center and PG&E power grid. The second project involved a highly technical and strategic construction project that placed solid waste in an unused portion of our landfill. Lance used GPS coordinates and implemented survey marks each day to adjust the outside landfill slopes as trash was added, maximizing the space capacity and minimizing airspace at our landfill. This highly technical project helped recover over 4,000 cubic yards of trash space, equalling nearly $300,000 in additional revenue to the residents of the city of Santa Maria. So it's employees like Lance that makes the city, Mr. Springer and my job, very easy, because they do exceptional work day in and day out. So congratulations, Lance.
If I may, just briefly, I just wanted to say that Mr. Lotus is a quiet, humble man who goes about his job without any fanfare, but the excellent quality of his work, he demonstrates to the employees at the landfill every day, and he's a great leader out there. So thank you very much for recognizing him for this award.
Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council, city staff, I'm excited, and it's a real honor, to represent the Utilities Department in receiving this award. I have a few people I'd like to thank, starting with the people that were mentors to me and to other city employees, kind of guided us and shaped our department and really what it is to be a city employee, starting with the gentleman Harold Rios Sr., and Butch Rios, and Jim Perry, and a beloved friend, Albert Montez, I think a lot of you remember him, and Billy Brown, who is, after 40 years, going to be spending some time with his grandkids. So, and of course, my two partners in crime, Daniel Mazzetti, Lex Shear, and another member of our crew, Al Montez. And with Billy leaving, we have a new guy coming, Herb Cantu. Welcome to our family of employees here at the city. We look forward to working with you. And I think those people, they taught me a lot about what it means to serve the public, some of it right, some of it wrong. But in a nutshell, that's, our Utilities Department and people are, like Shad said, they're behind the scenes getting things done. You put your trash can out, they come pick it up, every day. You turn on the water, fresh water. You flush the toilet, and we send the waste out to Shannon, and she handles it in her state-of-the-art facility there. So you have a good group of people in the Utilities Department, and we thank you for the award.
Madam Mayor and council members, if I may, after an extensive search for a replacement for our solid waste manager, I'm happy to announce that Herb Cantu started work with us at the city this week. If I could have him stand up, I'd appreciate it. He's coming to us from Fresno County, where he managed several landfills there. He is a graduate of Fresno State, which I know is near and dear to Mr. Hayden's heart. And he does have, come with us many number of certifications, including the Solid Waste Association of North America, and importantly, he's bringing a young family with him over here to join our community. So we're glad to welcome him here.
Wonderful. Welcome. The next order of business is the public comment session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise on this agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request-to-speak form. And Madam Mayor, I do not have any requests to speak this evening.
What? You couldn't drag someone off the street? Oh, my gosh. Be sure and tell Ben Hayes in the morning, Jack. Okay. Okay, so that's that. Let's, moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll-call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Okay. Does anyone have anything they need pulled? Item D.
Move for approval of consent calendar with the exception of item D.
I'll second. I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item D and a second from Ms. Zuniga. Having heard the motion and the second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And move for approval of item D.
I'll second.
It's been moved?
D.
It's moved and seconded to approve item D. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next order of business is already at the podium, is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider the quarterly financial report for the first quarter of 2015-16 and adopt a resolution approving operational and personnel amendments to the 2015-16 budget and authorizing the city manager to implement the same.
The staff report is being made by Director of Administrative Services, Mr. Vizet.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and the public. I'm going to be going over briefly the financial report for the first quarter ending September 30th of 2015, for primarily the general fund and enterprise fund. The beginning fund balance in the general fund of $10,268,000 is the unaudited balance as of July 1st, 2015. And it should be pretty close to that, because the audit's going to be done in a couple of weeks, so. Concerning city revenues through the first quarter of the year, sales tax receipts are $164,000 greater than last fiscal year. Gains in auto sales and lumber building materials are the category showing the majority of increased activity. Automobile demand remains a mainstay for manufacturing, as sales of cars and light trucks posted a 18.1 million annualized rate in September, the highest since 2005. NHIS revenue is at 23% of budget at $406,000, with a budget of $1,800,000. This compares to receipts through the first quarter of last year of $1,66,000, and the effects of the upcoming El Nino could dampen NHIS revenues for the fiscal year. But we still believe we'll be making the forecast of $1,800,000. Last fiscal year received $3.2 million, though, through June 30th of 2015. Permitted revenue is at $687,000, or about 29.5% of budget, versus $385,000 at June, or, excuse me, September 30th of last fiscal year. Expenditures include the annual fire debt service payment of $653,000 to the solid waste collection fund for the payoff of the Calperr side fund. We have about seven annual payments remaining on that loan. Concerning Measure U revenues through the first quarter, revenues were on budget at about 25.5% at $1,66,000. Expenditures are at 22.3%, and they include the annual levy loan payment of $106,130 recorded in the Admin Services Department within the Measure U fund. Through September, roughly 84% of expenditures were on public safety, with 41% spent on fire and 43% spent on police operations. So the majority of Measure U revenue once again is being spent on public safety activity. And these percentages will increase as we progress through the fiscal year. As the enterprise funds for the water and wastewater fund, expenditures exceeded revenue by about $1.6 million, primarily because they included the annual debt service principal payment and semi-annual interest payments, of $3.8 million on the 2012 refunding bonds. The remaining interest portion of $800,000 will occur in the third quarter of the fiscal year. And for solid waste fund, revenues exceeded, excuse me, expenditures exceeded revenues by $155,000. That concludes my staff report. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Vizet. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written communications?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any requests to speak. Or written communications.
Is this a full moon tonight, and I don't know? Okay? No, no, no. I'd like to bring this back into the council. Discussion, motion? What is your pleasure?
Oh, make a motion to accept the presentation of the budget, and also to adopt, let's see, am I on the right place? Adopt Resolution Number 2015-98 to be adopted, approving amendments to the 2015-16 budget and authorizing the city manager to implement same.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the Resolution 2015-98, and there is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. The next item is another regular, thank you, Mr. Vizet. The next item is another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please, please read the title?
The City Council will consider establishing a mid-block crosswalks across South Palisade Drive and East Church Street at Marion Regional Medical Center.
Okay. The staff report is being made by Director of Public Works, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm very pleased to bring this item before you tonight. This is the Marion Medical, excuse me, Marion Regional Medical Center pedestrian improvement. What you have before you is a map of the Marion campus. Right here is the Marion Hospital, and right here on the intersection of Cypress and Palisades Drive is the Marion parking lot and their heliport. To the north of Cypress here is associated medical facilities, and there are also medical facilities associated here off of Church Street. So pedestrians, employees, visitors, patients cross this road here to get to the parking lot and the heliport. The pedestrians should be using the crosswalks at Cypress Way and Palisades, but pedestrians use many locations to cross the roads in this general vicinity here due to the low volume of cars and low speeds of the cars. There's also pedestrians crossing over in here to get to these medical facilities. Similarly, these two medical facilities here, pedestrians from these facilities come over to the Marion Medical Center to use the cafeteria and to use the hospital facilities. They cross in general vicinities right in here. Throughout the last year, we've worked very closely with the staff of Marion Medical Center and their consultant to come up solutions, both onsite and offsite, to help remedy this problem and focus pedestrians into certain areas to cross our public right-ofways. Here is a picture of Palisades Drive. Marion Medical Center is right over here, and their parking lot and heliport is right over here. This is Cypress Way, which I talked about earlier, so pedestrians should be crossing right here and right here. However, they're crossing in various locations in the right-ofway here. This is a view from Marion Medical Center to their drop-off facility in front of the hospital. Right here, you see a staircase that leads up to the parking lot. Many pedestrians cross the road and come up this staircase to get into this parking lot right here. I'm now going to detail for you some solutions that we came up with, with the Marion staff and their consultant, in order to focus traffic to crosswalk facilities and try to keep them into the right-ofway in specific locations. First of all, we're proposing to put a mid-block crosswalk right here in front of Marion Hospital to the parking lot. As part of that improvement, there'll be installed a ramp versus an existing stairway down to that crosswalk. We're also proposing a new sidewalk over to Cypress Way. Currently, there was a sidewalk that went right here that led to Palisades Drive, once again to direct and focus pedestrian traffic to crosswalks. We're asking them to go right here, they could then cross Cypress Way right here to the Marion facilities. Marion is also proposing to build two onsite sidewalks to Palisades Drive to once again focus the traffic to crosswalks that we're proposing. This sidewalk would be installed right here, and this sidewalk would be installed right here, and they could go over to Cypress Way and cross the road right here to this new sidewalk that leads to the parking lot. Marion is also proposing to put fences along their parking lot, right here and right here, to once again focus pedestrian traffic to this ramp that goes across this crosswalk, once again directing traffic in one specific area across Palisades Drive. The other area on Church Street I spoke about earlier, this is a picture of it, the facilities are to the left of this picture where they're coming from, and here is a picture of the backside of Marion Hospital. Pedestrians cross in many locations over in this side to get to the hospital facilities and the cafeteria. What we're proposing right here is a mid-block crosswalk, as shown on this exhibit, with what we call bulbout. Bulbouts have several purposes. First of all, they shorten the distance of a pedestrian to cross the right-ofway. Second of all, they put the pedestrian out into the right-ofway, so they're more visible for the vehicles coming down the road. And third of all, vehicles go slower through there, because it narrows their right-ofway. Studies have shown that when the right-ofway is narrowed, vehicles tend to go slower. We're also putting raised markers on the knuckle here of this, so that as vehicles come around this corner, they tend to swing a little bit wider, once again slowing them down instead of cutting the corner and speeding around the corner. Staff, the consultant, and Marion Hospital officials feel that these are needed improvements to assist in the pedestrian circulation on the greater Marion campus, and I recommend the approval tonight. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments you may have at this time.
Ms. Waterfield?
Mr. Khan, are there going to be any lights indicators when a person's crossing on either of those crosswalks?
No, there's none proposed at this time. If we have these installations, these facilities, and we feel in the future we would need those, we would add those in the future, but at this time, they're not proposed.
Okay, my only question, the one on Palisade that you're putting right across from the parking lot, at nighttime, the lights, it's not lit very well, but sometimes the lights from the hospital tend to not let you see that street very well, so if there's people crossing there, they're hard to see. So if you're going to put a crosswalk there to push the pedestrian traffic in that direction, I would highly consider doing some lights, just so that the car traffic, vehicle traffic, will be able to see the pedestrians better at night.
You're talking about actual lights that light up the people that are crossing the street, not so much in-street flashing lights?
Right.
Okay. There is a street light on the picture you see right here that is right where that crosswalk is proposed to be. So we'll definitely take your point into consideration. Certainly, if it's not lit enough that people can't be seen, I would recommend adding lights. I would agree.
Definitely, definitely. And is that going to have any effect on the neighborhoods with it being so close to Palisade neighborhood? We've got vehicles that just, well, we've got a lot of traffic coming out of the neighborhoods, and I just don't want it to affect any of the neighborhoods' driveways or anything like that. So how far is it going to be from the nearest driveway?
It's quite a ways from the nearest driveway. If you look at this picture right here, the crosswalk is going to be right here, so from the driveway for the hospital parking lots down here, and then the residential parkways or residential driveways are down in here into the Hancock Park. So I would say that's 500, 600 feet at minimum.
Yeah, 100 yards. It's a ways.
Do we have signs coming around on Palisade from Hancock Park saying pedestrian crossing ahead?
There is signs. If you look at this picture right here where the red dot is, you can see there is a sign that says pedestrians crossing right there.
But what about from the neighborhood side?
I believe we do.
You don't know for sure?
I don't know for sure.
Okay, maybe we should check that out.
Okay. But I know we've added these signs over the past couple of years in order to deal with this pedestrian issue, as we've been working on it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for council? Mr. O'Rourke?
The, yes, I think Eddie has a great point there. I think a light on the other side of Palisades coming from the parking lot would certainly enhance that. I know we've got a street light, because sometimes you've got people coming out of the parking lot there, and I think there are a couple of trees, so I think it might be in order to put a light on the other side of the street, too, that'll really light up that crosswalk there.
You're talking on the screen right where my red dot is right now?
Correct. That's it.
Right there, because there's a light right here.
And then, yeah, and then the question on Church and Marcellus, those two stop signs will still remain there, because those are two-way stop.
Yes, they will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Zuniga?
Thank you, Mayor. I would be remiss, Mr. Khan, if I didn't communicate, since we're talking about lights, that I did receive a call from Sister Janet, who was requesting that there be flashing lights in the crosswalk, as she's concerned about, especially for children who are traveling back and forth on the streets, and for adults as well. But she thought that having some flashing lights would just highlight that the crosswalk is there and enhance public safety.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Boyson?
I guess by way of ex parte, I should also say that Sister Janet contacted me and advised me of how I was going to vote tonight, and also requested the flashing lights.
I will also admit that ex parte, Sister Janet contacted me, too. Divine intervention, I think is what you call it. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we have no requests.
Okay. So I'll close the public hearing, bring this item back to the council for discussion, or am I? Oh.
Want to comment on this project?
Oh, okay.
I'm Francisco Shepherd. I'm the first house to the end of the road there, and I have not been notified at all. This is the first thing that I heard about this, and I would like to possibly postpone it so I can even look at it. This is my driveway, and right now, I have enough problems with the people going into the hospital, to the parking lot, and I just want to see, and I don't think it's 600 feet what it is. I want to see precisely where it is, and there are no signs, not one sign, that says crosswalk in that whole area, I mean, people crossing. Some years ago, you stuck a tuck sign in front of my door that I had years to get rid of, and I just want to make sure that this is, I want to drive it, I want to see it, and I want it comfortable.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Khan, what is the procedure when we do roadwork and we're going to do a change for the roadwork? Do we send notices out to neighbors, like we usually do 500 feet, to everybody that it may affect?
There is no requirement for notification of the public around these facilities. I'm not saying we shouldn't have done it, but there's I'm not saying we shouldn't have done it, but there's no requirement for it.
Okay. So when you're working with, I guess, when you're working with a project like this and you do have neighbors, because I know that when they did the building of the hospital, they definitely notified everybody around there, and along with the helipad as well. So what's the difference between the two projects?
I believe that due to the PD and the approval of the hospital, I believe that that was required noticing based on sequel requirement. So I think that would be the difference.
Mr. Trujillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I did want to mention that this project will be coming back before the council at a future date. When the project, let me back up. Recent case law, when I say recent, I mean very recent, has established design immunity for the city if the council preapproves the design along with the city staff. The case is so new that we haven't had time yet to develop a resolution, but we will be doing that shortly. And as the project gets more defined, more specifically, we will bring it back, have the council adopt a resolution approving its design, which would also give us design immunity should anybody be injured in this crosswalk. At that point, I suggest that the speaker and the public works director can get together and review those more specific plans as they're developed.
Is that satisfactory, Ms. Shepherd?
I just want to make sure, is this going in? Are you voting on it tonight? Or is there some comments on it, or one can look at the plans and study them?
We will be voting on the approving of the pedestrian improvements, but we've not yet done the design, right, Mr. Trujillo?
Correct. It will be developed, and we will be bringing it back with more specifics. So it gives the opportunity for the speaker to consult with staff and have her input, and ultimately, it will come back to the council a second time for review.
For review.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
If I could just add to that, on what Mr. Trujillo's talking about, we'll bring back exact details of spine locations, exact construction details. All those will be coming back to the council for your final approval.
Well, then, will you notify then other residents in that area?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Or will you get together with Mrs. Shepherd?
Okay. Ms. Waterfield?
I have a question. When we were, when we had our little meeting about educating me on the traffic and the flow of traffic and stop signs and crosswalks, I understood that to put a stop sign in, it has to be warranted. You can't, you can't. Is that the same for crosswalks, too?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so it has to be warranted, make sure that, okay.
We're very closely with their consultant on the warrant merit for these particular crosswalks. They have to be distances from the stop sign, which is exactly 150 feet from the Cypress Way stop sign. The distances have to be there, traffic volume, pedestrian volumes have to be high enough to warrant it. So there are warrants for these crosswalks.
And so you've been doing a case study on this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Khan, now, do you take this back to the traffic committee, or?
It's already been to the traffic committee.
But the rest of the design will not go back to the traffic committee?
That's correct.
Okay, it'll just come here?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, can I make a comment? Because I went to visit a friend that had bypass surgery today, as a matter of fact. But I went on Sunday afternoon, and I parked on the other side of the heliport and walked out. And I have to say that I did go to Cypress, and everybody else that I saw coming and going went across the street, kids, parents, everything. And there's, I'll say there wasn't a plethora of traffic, but everyone walked across the street. And one thing I'll say is the fencing to force people to go to the two exact crosswalk areas is really the key factor, because people come out of the parking lot and they're walking through the shrubs and so forth and so on. And then also, I'll say Marion putting in the sidewalks, because when I came off of Cypress, I had to walk in the driveway going to the front door of the hospital, which is kind of inconvenient when people are driving on that side, or on the driveway, I should say. So that's a key point, I think.
Okay.
So with the assurance from Mr. Trujillo that this will be coming back to us for a final review, I would move for the approval of Resolution Number 2015-98?
99.
99. I did, I had it underlined.
Your glasses. Okay. It's been moved in second to approve Resolution 2015-99. And with the second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Hi.
Councilmember O'Rourke. Councilmembers Zuniga.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Now we have our final regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider introducing an ordinance amending Section 10-3.205 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code relating to park hours for city facilities.
Staff report is to be made by the Director of Recreation and Parks, Mr. Posada.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, good evening. Tonight, we have a little bit of cleanup ordinance, is what we're trying to do here. Back in April of 2013, I believe, the council approved an ordinance that set up park operation hours. Prior to that, it was pretty much understood that the parks closed at dusk, and that was pretty much the area that we would tell the public about, we would post it that way. What we found was is that that was not able to be enforced. There was no ordinance citing parks closing at dusk. Working with the city attorney's office, we came up with a verbiage in April 2013, making it unlawful for people to be present in enclosed city facilities. In Item A2 of that is the concern. In that item, it states that an outdoor area enclosed by fencing owned or operated by the city of San Maria, that was how it was defined. The problem that we found was the fencing. In order to fence some of our public parks, some of them are pretty huge, the cost was inordinate. We reapproached the city attorney's office this year, and we spoke a little bit about how we could look at other city ordinances. They researched it and found that, in fact, it was possible to post parks, and it was typical in California to find parks posted closing at certain hours. So this ordinance basically is cleanup ordinance. It makes that change. And in the ordinance, it changes the verbiage to strike the area, an outdoor area enclosed by fencing owned or operated by the city, and replaces it with any park owned or operated by the city of San Maria that the Director of Recreation and Parks has designated as having restricted hours. On any public, Item 3, on any public park or recreation facility subject to this section, the supervising employee at such site makes then closing time for up to two and one-half hours to accommodate departmentally approved events. And basically, we're talking about those facilities, like a softball field or something like that, that has lights and is able to be occupied after those hours. Section B of that strikes the area, entrance to this facility is prohibited between the hours of, and it inserts entrance to or remaining in this facility or park is prohibited between the hours of, and we would insert those hours. That concludes my staff report. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Posada. Any questions of Mr. Posada?
I have one, Alex. Mr. Posada, are parks have the same hours? Do all the parks have the same hours, or do they have different hours?
This would allow us the flexibility to post parks based on their use. Right now, we are looking at somewhere in the area of whatever what they call civil twilight is, dusk, till about 6 o'clock in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications or requests to speak?
Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, I'll bring this back to council for discussion or a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2015-13 to be introduced for the first reading and continue to the next meeting. Second reading and adoption amending Section 10-3.205 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code relating to park hours for city facility.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt Ordinance Number 2015-13. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Next item of the business will be the report of the city manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council, I think we have a record this evening. It's 7:13. Only took us 11 months to get here.
Public comment.
Well, the mayor's a little slow in her second term.
Next agenda will be on the 17th of November. We have, as far as the consent calendar, a couple of consent agenda items. One is the second reading of the ordinance that you just approved this evening. We have a presentation, it's a record, it's an accommodation for Billy Brown. You heard his name was mentioned earlier this evening. Billy's retiring from the city of Santa Maria after 40 years of fine, dedicated city service. We have a public hearing at the next city council meeting, and that is the fireworks restriction ordinance. If you recall, we had a number of residents come and voice their concern after the Fourth of July holiday to the city council for a couple of months. City staff has met with them, we've heard their concerns, and we do have an action plan for council's consideration at the next meeting. That will be a public hearing for an ordinance change to our municipal code. The other one will be a downtown specific plan. Finally, we're bringing this forward for council's consideration, the revisions to the downtown specific plan. That'll be a first reading. And then, one regular business item, and that is a tourism marketing district resolution of intent for council's consideration. That'll be a regular business item on the 17th of November. That concludes my staff report.
Next item is the oral reports of council members. Mr. Boyson? Did you want to repeat?
Could you repeat that? It is a fun event, and it is that council members can stop by if they can let me know. We'd like to coincide that with some of our TV breaks and that sort of thing. So if you give me a good time for you, I'll let you know when those.
You want to tell the public what the fun event is going to be, being slated here?
So the fun event is the KCOY Turkey Drive on November 19th. And actually, this was just a ploy to be able to say this twice. But the KCOY Turkey Drive, it benefits the Central Road Rescue Mission, Catholic Charities, Good Samaritan Shelter, Salvation Army, Coast Valley, among other nonprofits in the area. We're there for all day long from 5:30 in the morning till about 6:30 at night, collecting turkeys and other food items, nonperishable food items, and would invite the public to come out, drop by a turkey, or just come out and have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Rourke?
Well, Keith, actually, what he said was that you were a turkey.
He'll be in the suit, actually, yeah.
That's okay. Is that the 19th of November?
Did I not mention it's the 19th of November?
Hours, 5:00 in the morning till?
5:30 in the morning, 6:30 at night.
That's the 19th, right?
The 19th of November, this year.
Okay, Madam Mayor, my wife reminded me to remember to take my list of things that I've done. Had a meeting with the county folks, and Rick Hayden and I were, and police chief and the mayor, with the county about the problems we have with the methadone clinic over here on Fessler. On the 21st, 22nd was Rabo Bank Open House, quite impressive, they're happy to be here, and all those other good things. On the 24th, was across the street and was there for a little while for One Heart, had the Make a Difference Day at the mall, very, very nice. 28th was Empty Bowls, which was pretty spectacular, feeding a whole heck of a lot of people and creating a food bank, a couple of bucks. On the 31st was Halloween, I participated. On the 2nd, it rained. I don't know if any of you saw that. And then today, I had a meeting with Rick about various opportunities here in the city. Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield?
Thursday, October 22nd, attended Tippacop fundraiser at Red Robin, and also attended the Rabo Bank Open House. Both events were really great. Rabo Bank is going to be a great asset to the city of Santa Maria. They'll be hosting about 300 employees when they finally grow out, so that's going to be exciting. Friday, October 23rd, I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Khan and Ms. Hallie Holden regarding traffic conditions and procedures, and thank you so much for educating me on that, because I have been getting a lot of questions from the public, so I wanted to make sure I got the good information or the right information out to them, so I really appreciate that. Tuesday, October 27th, I was a keynote speaker for Leadership Santa Maria. It was their alumni month, and that was a lot of fun, had a lot of great people in the audience that I knew very well, so that was very nice. Wednesday, October 28th, volunteered at the Food Bank's Empty Bow event, and I think Councilwoman Terry Zuniga, I rock the water. Thursday, October 29th, attended the Minerva Club, also attended Calm's Open House on Enos, and that's such a very nice facility for children and families. And also, attended YL Dinner at Church for Life. And YL Dinner, YL stands for Young Lives, and this is a Christian-based organization that takes the high school kids, and instead of bringing those kids into your life, these kids bring you into their lives, and you see what they're going through, through different aspects of their life. And eventually, it helps the child with, it's a Christian-based, so it helps the child with their understanding of the Lord, it helps them to accept the Lord in their life, and gets them on a road to not wanting to go down a gang road or go down a wrong road. And the proof of the pudding was, and this was so exciting, this young man from Long Poke, who was raised in a gang family, that was his 19th birthday? I believe it was his 19th birthday. He lost an aunt to drugs and gang, he lost his father to drugs and gang, he lost his mother to drugs and gang. There were six kids in this family. YL got ahold of him, and a lot of it of the information, it comes from their own peers. So a peer reached out to him and said, why don't you come to a YL meeting with us? And these YL meetings are held in individual homes where they allow kids to be kids, they play games, they do whatever they need to do, but the last 15 minutes is Bible study, and let's let you learn what you need to know about other things in life. He turned his life around, and he said, he goes, this is my birthday today. And I felt that he probably never had "Happy Birthday" sung to him, so we got everybody to sing "Happy Birthday" to him. And it was such, it was such a right road to put these kids on, because I got to tell you, the next day, this is going to be hard for me, I went on a ride-along, and I went with Sergeant Woody Vega, and that happened to be the night that there was a homicide of a 21-year-old gang member, or a 21-year-old victim. And to go from a previous night to finding a solution, and then going to the next day and seeing what choices, what happens when you make other choices in life, it just was, it was tough. But I got to tell you this, I am so proud of our Santa Maria PD, because when we arrived there, we were, gosh, we arrived there quickly when we got the call. The young man was on the ground, the ambulance hadn't been there yet, nor the fire department had not been there. had not been there yet, and other officers were starting to arrive. As they came to this scene, it was almost like a choreographed dance. Everybody knew their place, there was no chaos, where in my mind, because this was my first time, where I thought there would be chaos, there was no chaos, there was calm, everything was calm. Sergeant Woody Vega was just amazing, because he was covering his team, and they looked to him as a leader, and he just allowed them to do their job. And I got to give kudos to our chief, Ralph Martin, for coming in and creating such a department of such great men and women, that when there is chaos out there, or where there should be chaos out there, with any other person civilian like me thinking there should be, there isn't, because we have such a highly professional police department. And I am so proud, so proud, to be a city council member, knowing that we have these type of employees, not only in our PD, but also in the rest of our city departments. But this one incident was just a real eye-opener to me, because I can see every step of the way with this whole experience.
Are they using my phone?
And I just want to thank you for giving me that opportunity. Didn't know it was going to happen, but it did, and it was just absolutely amazing, so I just want to thank you for that. That was Friday. Monday, November 2nd, I did Toys for Tots kickoff at City Hall, and then attended the badge pinning of Todd Logan to Sergeant, and the promotions and recognition of Crystal Cross to Assistant ID Technician, and Reynaldo Perez to Dispatcher 1 as well. And it just gives you the whole full circle of what a great team we have for the City of Santa Maria, so far as public safety goes. I am just so proud of all these men and women, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Waterfield. Ms. Zuniga.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the League of Women Voters Water Forum, and I just want to say that Shannon Sweeney represented the city on the panel and did an awesome job, she just did great, had questions answered, not only for her area, but for some of the other members' areas as well, so that was great to see that. There were representatives there from county, state, and other water purveyors, so it was a really informative, and I just want you to know she did a good job. I also, with other council members, attended the Empty Bowls and helped serve water, and I do think we rocked it, we did a great job, kept everybody well-watered. And I attended and provided opening remarks for the Make a Difference Day on Saturday at the mall, and it was really great. I think they had something like 25 nonprofits out there with booths and food and dancing, and it was a great time, so participated in some of the things they did early in the morning. And then also attended the event at Santa Maria PD and really appreciated that, that's always good to go over there and see the new home for the department and see how happy everybody is. And then finally, just on behalf of the Serve Santa Maria leadership team, I would like to let the public know and invite people to prayer. We have prayer on the first Tuesday of every month from 1:00 to 2:00 at Bethel Lutheran Church, and you know, we're just praying over our city, as Councilmember Waterfield shared, that you know, we've got some nice things happening in our community, so if people have a heart to pray for the community, you can join us the first Tuesday of every month from 1:00 to 2:00 at Bethel Lutheran Church, which is on Camino Callejo behind Miller Street School. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. October 21st, I attended the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce Business Development Forum. Later that day, had a meeting with the county on the methadone clinic, October 22nd. I met with Supervisor Compton and Supervisor Meacham from San Luis Obispo County, and they wanted to see the new police department, so Chief Martin took us through the new department. I think I can make the, do the tour now, Chief, so, just in case you need somebody. Attended a Tippecop for the Special Olympics, attended the grand opening for Rabo, the new operations center, and somebody told me that a young, no, a woman or a young man, I can't remember now, came there to Rabo Bank to turn themselves in, thinking it was the police department. So I told them that I would talk to you so you could leave some handcuffs at the door with your cellphone. They even asked for an adjoining door, but I thought that was over the top, so we won't do that. Let's see, and then October 23rd, I did Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Board Meeting and did an interview with the Santa Maria Times with Yvette Peralta. October 22nd, 27th, I did the Relay for Life kickoff, which will now be in Santa Maria, and it'll be at the Fair Park. October 28th was the Empty Bowls event, which was, I guess they had made, I think, 900 bowls, and Judy Monte said that 800 were gone, so I think that's approximate, so I don't know for sure how many. I was the honorary chairperson for that, and later that day, in the cold, I did an interview outside with a new news anchor, Melissa Mahan. October 29th, I met with people from the Merian Medical Center regarding an expansion, and did a meeting at the Boys and Girls Club of the Santa Maria Valley, and that night, I attended the Young Life Coastal Valleys banquet that Ms. Waterfield was talking about. This morning, I did the Ben Hayes Show, and then I attended the Medical Marijuana Dispensary Appeal Hearing to be heard at the San, that was heard at San Luis Obispo Board of Supervisors, because they're thinking of putting a medical marijuana dispensary right across the river from Santa Maria. And so I told them I didn't think that was appropriate. Anyway, and Chief Martin went along, very, they voted it down. It was your presentation, I'm sure, you would have been very proud of our chief there. He had the numbers, and he had the information, and he wasn't being intimidated by a member of the San Luis Obispo supervisors. Okay. The City Council will now recess to a closed session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of the closed session item?
Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Section 5495.7.6 of the Government Code, Agency Representative, Deputy City Manager.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes tonight's council meeting. Good night.